Yeah. No, it was.
That's good.
It's interesting what they know like. Is I've had. And here for me now. So that's a good one. Yeah, it's correct. So we can coordinate. On bridge because they recognize how this is also. But that's just a lot.
Yeah. It's not.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's. What?
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Wednesday 1:30 meeting, Public Works. I'll just turn it over.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Mike Moss, Public Services Director of Leach. Got agenda in front of you today. The very first item we have is from Parks. Cougar restroom update. We actually signed the agreement this morning with Pacific Core. And are going to the restrooms in Cougar tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM to get keys and open up the restrooms for the first time to see what shape they're in. They have not been open since the end of December. Our plan is to hopefully open them up tomorrow, but if they're really bad shape, we'll go back up on Friday. And make sure they get opened on Friday for just in time for spring break, which starts into this week for the school kids. So. Great news for the community. We'll make sure we get a press release out as soon as we know a date, either tomorrow afternoon or Friday, but best plan having the restrooms open before the weekend.
Since it's a pretty quick turnaround time for spring vacation, do you have a sign that you'll post out there? Because most people assume it's closed.
That's a great idea, Commissioner. We'll do that. We'll get the sign shop, talk to them this afternoon, get a now open sign, restrooms now open. You have a great idea.
And just keep track of how long it takes for a bullet hole to hit. I hope not. I hope not.
On the public works side, yesterday Sean and Sean and I went to the PUD Commissioners meeting at two o'clock yesterday. And watched them sign the agreement for the landfill gas to energy project that you guys signed last Tuesday. They did have a few questions that we were able to answer yesterday. We're doing a joint press release that hopefully be coming out early next week describing the project and the commitment by both parties. So it's great to see the next step of getting that signed. We'll get the signature contracts that have been signed over to Kelly and others for, I know you guys signed first, but we'll get our copies.
Should we prepare one of those gigantic checks when we deliver the dollars?
Six million dollars. Next item is from Susan.
So, good afternoon, Susan Eugenous County Engineer. So I have the biannual, biennial stormwater grant. That is for implementing the MPDS permit. The grant amount they're offering, this biennium is $130,000 to do the tasks that we have to do. So I'm asking permission to go ahead and sign that because it's set up for my signature and then we can move it through the board on consent. Unless you'd like me to say no, and I will let them know.
And this grant is going to be targeting what type of work?
So this is the, I'm sorry, I should have explained it better. This is the NPDES permit implementation and so we can use it for any of the items that are required part of the permit. So we'll use it to continue our mapping efforts, our public outreach and education efforts. If we have an illicit discharge that we need to investigate, we can charge that against this grant. So it's just our normal permit activities.
And so the money gets put in the stormwater reserve or the stormwater fund or is it the?
It's a reimbursable.
Oh, it's on reimbursement?
It's on a reimbursable. So we'll use it for our staff time and items that we go out. This year is the year that we get a new permit. So the end of the year, we'll be reviewing the new permit and studying our program.
And so far, no pushback from ecology on climate change language and?
Nothing that I've seen in this, but as I said, their new permit is being issued. We'll see the final draft in July with the new date being August 1st that we're under the new permit. So I have not seen the final verbiage on the updated permit. I do know some of the things that are coming in the updated permit. Because we're a phase two community, we can see what phase one has to do because there are permit cycle ahead of us. So there's some more structural controls. They want us to start retrofitting intense urban areas with water quality. And I have some ideas on how to do that and the amount you have to retrofit is based on your area. So we'll be moving forward.
So intense urban areas for the county would be Lexington, I suppose.
Yes, Lexington.
Which is wholly contained within a flood control district. So, I mean, those waters are controlled.
So they're looking at water quality controls. So that would be what we'd be looking at, not just quantity. So they, they want you to start putting water quality devices out within your area. So we have some ideas of good places to focus, such as Riverside Park would be an area. It's all county owned. We could get a nice facility out there and then maybe make it into a public education in addition to a stormwater because one of the things that is part of the permit is rain gardens, which tend to be installed on homeowners. Properties because of the way the permit reads. And so if we could make a demonstration rain garden and so we could hit two birds with one stone. And money from this grant could be used in that process, design and implementation of it.
I just remember going through that on the city council and of course with all the drainage ditches that supported wildlife. The main pollutant was of natural waste from the critters. And we had to demonstrate strategies to do something to stop that, which is one of those wonderfully.
Did you put up signs? No pooping zone?
No, but the city is digging up chunks of this, the paved streets for rain gardens. It's all part of that little.
Part of that. Wow.
The one that people wreck their cars because they miss the curb and go down and it's just some real waste of money that.
Those ones along Tenet Way are examples. Yes. And some of their, their handicap ramp, but rump, handicap ramp bump outs. They planted along next to them in rain gardens. Few heads, when Kelso reconstructed U Street a few years ago, their stormwater quality along there was rain gardens. So if you drive down South Pacific and take a left onto you, you'll see some that they installed.
Interesting, because we always hear from the ecology community that we need to use best available science. And cleaning up drainage ditches is not connected to those rain gardens. I don't think there's any evidence that it works.
Yeah.
But you check the box and you get the permits. Am I skeptical?
I guess your question is, are you okay to go ahead and sign this thing?
That was the question. Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody's nodding. Must be having some work done on the annex. It caught my eye. Somebody walking across the roof.
So I was just handed, and please don't get too excited over this. This is a deed for an easement out on South Cloverdale Road. It was not one of the holdouts. It's just the one that we had gotten before the holdouts. So I'm asking for permission for Commissioner Dahl to go ahead and execute these so we can get them recorded and the owner paid.
I think that goes. So we duties as otherwise assigned.
Yeah. Are you down to that two?
We're down to two and I did have a cross my fingers positive that one of the two is willing to sign. So that we would be down to only one moving through the.
Is that the estate? No.
No, that is not the estate. So we're hopeful we can get that signed next week. So. My other item today is an update on Tootle Park Road. As I reported, I don't know if that was last week or a couple of weeks ago. They're all blending together for me. We were meeting with Warehouser. We met with Warehouser this week and they do not want us to extend Burma through their property and go that way. So I am looking at some other options to see what other options we have and I'll be working on that to come up with an alternative. Either realigning the road where it is and making it one lane. I don't know. I haven't started fleshing out these ideas, but it's something I'll be working on.
So did they say no for a legitimate reason that there's some valuable operations on that sand pit that we're trying to go across?
So it's not, so at the end of Burma is one of their big facilities where they have, that's where their offices are, where they start a lot of their seedlings, where they do maintenance on a lot of their equipment. And so they, Burma Road ends at a fence and a gate. And so they, their reason was we have enough problems keeping people out. Opening this up so that they could drive right through this facility where we have. where we have all this equipment is detrimental to our security. So that was their reason why they did not want us to go through that site.
I think you had also, you had mentioned an alternative that goes between houses or something like that.
That is, yeah, and that's why I'm going to look at those closer to see what alternative looks like we can do without physically impacting any of the homes out there. Was why, why, to me initially Warehouser seemed the best route. So now I'm going to be looking more closely at the other alternatives that we can do out there. There's never an easy button for me.
Next we have Facility Needs Steering Committee. We'll have Sean and Savannah up for them.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Savannah Clement, Public Services. So that's correct. We did have a Facilities Needs Steering Committee meeting yesterday afternoon. It was quite a hefty agenda. We had a lot of items to go over, naming primarily funding updates and then also some additional space needs that have been identified. So I wanted to bring that to the board as well and just let them know a couple of these items you guys are aware of. We've kept you apprised throughout the process. Of course HVAC funding, project implementation for that project at the Hall. Also our tour of Lewis County and their new HVAC system using the same company that we're interested in using. I have updated the board with the interlocal agreement that we hope to propose with Washington Department of Enterprise Services. So that will be in the near future. They've returned it to us and we're reviewing it now. It's, Ashley's also reviewed it from purchasing, so it'll go to legal after this. Some of the funding sources that we've been running down were actually given to us from Commissioner Dahl and Kelly in their visit to Washington DC about a month ago. One of them was USDA rural development funding, which because our county seat is in Kelso, we are eligible for. In addition to funding, they also kind of have the opportunity to secure low interest, long-term loans. So that is another, go ahead.
Why does Kelso have anything to do with qualifications?
So US, go ahead.
Population. They're under 15,000.
Yeah.
So then they qualify. If we were sitting in Longview, you wouldn't qualify under USDA because it's over.
But the whole county, including Longview, then qualifies.
In this situation.
Well, the building, if you did something with a building in Kelso because it's under 15,000, it qualifies. If it's sitting in Longview, it doesn't. Yeah.
I agree. So we did a tour with a USDA program coordinator this morning at the Hall of Justice. We just did a high level tour. It was about an hour and a half. We stayed in the common areas, the public areas. We did not do any tours in the inside offices. We really wanted to address the obvious security needs that we have at the building, our obvious HVAC issues. And then just kind of a general overview. And she was really, her name is Kathleen, and she was really excited that she came down and thankful because she said she really had to see it. You know, she, she didn't have a really good understanding until touring the building. So we met with her after that tour and she has some homework to do for us and us for her. And so we plan on meeting with her architect. And then we had a couple of representatives, judges who were interested in doing a more in-depth tour of the facility. So going back into those offices, Judge Chamber areas, Superior Court, to show her that piece as well. I do want to let the board know that one of the first things she asked us right off the gate was, have you had a study done? To determine if you should stay in this building and remodel it or if you should build new. And I told her we have not. So that was one of her suggestions.
Well, we did have the McShane report.
You had the Ming, do you mean the Ming?
No, the McShane report that we, Frank McShane, McShane, put that together and recommended that it had good bones and we need to adapt to it.
Do you know what year that was presented in?
Just before you moved to Public Works.
Okay.
I, 2000, I think. Might have been 16 when they finished up.
Okay, I can, I mean, that's new enough to pull that information. The only study we have on facilities that I'm aware of is of course the Ming study. So, which doesn't, it doesn't necessarily say what is the better option cost wise, right? And I don't know that the McShane one does either. I'll look through that and also I can do that and bring back the board some information on that too. So, so yeah, we plan on meeting with her team again in April and doing a more in-depth tour to see what other options. She's also going to look into funding opportunities for us that are more grant based. So some exciting.
And with their concern about Longview, did they realize that a portion of the building is inside the city?
They did not. And that was one of the items we did bring up and discuss with her. Not only that, but potential properties that we could utilize that the county owns that are also within the city limits of Longview and what kind of problems that would, you know, be for us. She did say because they've redone some of their, for lack of a better word, you know, census and how they determine areas, that that could be an eligible area. And when I say this, I'm talking about the property on Seventh Avenue in New York. It's about, is it 11 acres? Around 11 acres of county owned property. So obviously very beginning stages in working with the USDA. But I did feel like after that meeting, it was promising. And I, and she was really engaged in the project already. So that was great. We're continuing to work on OPD space. I shared with the group, it has been challenging and challenging because we're working with, we're, we say we're public works and we kind of come in and say, hey, how can we, how can we make this work and bring people into this space and what would, what would the needs be? So it has been challenging in trying to move people around and proposing different strategies for, for housing folks over there at the Hall, primarily the first floor. But I will say Sheriff Thurman and Ryan Jervikin in the prosecuting attorney's office and electeds have been really willing to work with us and maybe, you know, move their, their offices into other spots that we've presented to them. So that's been awesome. And so we're still continuing to work down that route. The next phase would be likely to work with Collins or Aeta is now their name, to determine what kind of space needs we would need for those offices and the cost. So that would be the next step. And we're still working on some other alternatives. We talk module, you know, modular units and, and locations for those as well. So we still are working on that. And I had.
And our lease is still good through December?
We are out of lease.
Or we're doing month, it's just month by month.
It's month by month, correct. Anything else? And just one more thing to add. I could talk about this stuff all day probably, but I will end with this. The CIP process, we do have all of those submissions. We wanted to have our Facilities Steering Needs Committee meeting to kind of maybe hash out some of these space needs items at this meeting. And then we'll be working as a team to go through those applications and hopefully present to the board in the very near future on those. So that's all I have for facilities. All right. I do see we have a purchasing item up, some project contract updates from Ashley Clausen, who is our buyer and house at Public Works.
Good afternoon. Oop, can you hear me now? Okay. Good afternoon, Ashley Clausen. I am the buyer. I am in purchasing. And I have been invited here to tell you some of the fun and exciting things we've been working on lately. We have several piggybacking agreements in our locals that we've been working on. Milleg, the Department of Enterprise Services, ESCO Project, the HVAC, I have been helping to review those. We've had to update, you just saw yesterday, the update to the Master DES contract. They wanted to renew that. The gun range bathroom from Parks is a source well agreement. The camera and locks for the security at the Hall of Justice is an ongoing project that we are working on. As well as the Hall of Justice second floor remodel, we're working on some furniture order to spruce up the lobby there. Couple of RFPs we have in the works. I've got the camera system maintenance for the jail. You might recall recently there was a project to install some additional cameras at the jail. And now this is the agreement to come back and maintain those, do the updates, software, firmware, things like that. As well as a banking RFP with Ms. Deborah Gardner. It's been a while since she has looked around and done some shopping. So I'm working with her to get a new RFP out for that. A couple of amendments that you might see coming up soon. The catering services, the company that provides the catering for events at the event center, they are up for renewal. This is also the last extension. So we are starting talks on a new RFP for the 2025 and beyond years. And then courier services, that is countywide. It's upcoming. It does expire in April. So we will be working on that one. Couple of construction bids we have going on. There was some fence damage due to a drunk driver at the event center again. So that will be an insurance claim, but we are working on getting the bids to actually replace the fence as well as the sheriff's office evidence room at the Hall of Justice. The RFQ that we have out right now, the big one, it is due on April 5th. It is for the event center for the planning and design of the RV park. This is not for the actual construction of, it's just for the design of and some options, to get options on what they've got available out there. Also coming out of our office, we've got some reviews and some updates to the purchasing policy, our processes, procedures. The big thing I'm starting to work on is our purchasing policy because with the 2024 legislation updates comes some changes that need to be made. The big change in our policy will be the limited works roster. Up until now, we are able to do three quotes for projects that are under 50. That is now jumping to 150. And under 150, we can now direct contract and go, or we don't have to do the bidding process. That is specifically for small businesses that have signed their affidavits and they're 50 or fewer employees and $7 million and under for three consecutive years. So they're, the state's trying to open up some opportunities for small businesses to get, to get more of the government business. And then also there's retainage and bonding requirements that are changing along with that.
Do you guys think that's going to be a good thing? Do we have businesses around here that probably don't participate because they, it's too onerous or is it too early to tell?
I'd probably say yes. The process for working some of the public works and other jobs does require a lot of time and effort to respond to some of our project items. Would you agree with that, Ashley?
Yeah, and we, we do, we do have a lot of small businesses, but I think probably the smaller businesses are being underbid because of the bigger companies.
Okay.
So this gives an opportunity for everybody.
Unfortunately, $150,000 is about, what, 50,000 bought us 15 years ago, right?
It sounds like a big change, but in the grand scheme of things.
And this was an inflation change? Is that what you're saying?
You know, you're paying.
That's their cost of living adjustment.
It goes from there.
Are there any other questions?
And just to reiterate, we'll make some highlights for these policy changes and bring those to you at a future date for review at a workshop.
I had one question because I sit in the meeting yesterday and Ian was talking about our camera and our security updates at the Hall of Justice. We had to take that in phases because if we went it in too much volume, we ran into, what did he say? We ran into fire issues or, do you remember what that was?
I did come in, I came in a little late to that meeting, but I think it was because they had to make sure certain doors, the fire exits were acceptable to put certain types of locks on those doors to make sure our fire escape routes were adequate.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure my colleagues heard that they were phasing that because they ran into that issue.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wish Warehouser would have been a little more. That would have been the easy solution up there.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, we can, we can still, you know, we have the right of eminent domain if we want to go that route.
Yeah.
So that's all we had unless you guys had anything else for us.
Any questions? I think, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else? So we get 30 minute break before rural facility district?
And that's just a how to, how the process works?
Well, it sounds like she wants to actually give a first run of these projects.
Okay.
And then next week, the cities, et cetera, will be in.
So, so I suppose that the amount of all the applicants is exactly equal to the money we have available. So it's an easy, easy decision for us to make.
Well, I, when our deal went out, it said we had 2 million and these came in at about 4.2. I know we have more than 2 million in there and she'll tell us if we're close. I'm sure we probably are.
I was being a little sarcastic. They always ask for more money than we have available.
Yeah.
Because they all are convinced they deserve all of the money that's available. So.
We'll get a chance to look at that in a few minutes here. Okay.
Cool.
We'll adjourn this one and be back at 2:30.
Today and then also next week at this time, right?
Right. Kathy, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. So what I had planned for today was to just in general go over the projects, just so you could have a feel for what's coming. And next week they'll actually do, they'll be here, the entities will be here to present.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
And, and so a couple of reminders, one, we, we accepted applications and we had a total of five applicants. I'm estimating that we have about $2 million available for this year's disbursement. We have already dispersed, have obligated one point, about 1.6 million dollars to disperse. The good news is that this fund, this Rural Public Facilities Fund is bringing in about 2.6 right now. So we would be allocating more than the current year's earnings, but we've under allocated in the past years, so we have the funds available. Does that make sense?
So we have, we have some funds sitting in, in the account right, right now that we've under allocated.
Right. And what I had estimated the last time that I made a presentation on this fund was that we, we had even setting aside some funds for cash flow and things like that. So that we're conservative. Hold on. I had estimated that we would have about four, 4.2 million dollars at the end of '24 available that hasn't been allocated. So allocating 2 million of that 4 million still leaves us with a balance, an unallocated balance at the end of the year.
Okay, so at the end of December, assuming it comes in like we think, there should be around, if you didn't do anything, about 4.2 million sitting, sitting there.
Yep.
Okay.
So, and that was also assuming that I, I also kept a reserve to cover debt coverage things, because we do have one debt obligation committed towards this fund. So I also reserved before I even looked at that 4 million, I reserved money for the debt coverage.
How much is that obligation?
Yeah.
That obligation is on an annual basis, I believe it's about $400,000. So I, I reserved.
And that's for how long?
It actually expires, I believe in 2025. I can get the exact dates for you.
Did we do the PFD RV out of this, I mean the, the Events Center RV park out of this?
We, we've already funded.
And that's already taken into account in the numbers you give us.
Right. That was a total of $900,000 for the RB RV park at the Events Center. And that's already been funded. It was paid out over three years.
So this, you've already taken into account this 400,000, it doesn't affect this, what you project to be 4.2?
Right.
All right.
Right. And like I said, this year we're on, we're, we're committed to fund Port of Longview for $500,000. City of Castle Rock, which has already been dispersed for a million dollars. And then $50,000 for CEDC personnel support. And that will.
Well, how much was that, that's, I'm sorry?
For CEDC, $50,000. And that looks like it's traditionally been happening every single year for the last few years. And that one I need to disperse, I just noticed the date, I need to disperse it this month.
They'll be sending you a late notice.
Yes, send me a late notice. Oh no, I'm gonna have it in. We'll, we'll have it in by tomorrow. So that's what we're, we're, that's what we're committed to for this year.
Okay.
So just to be sure, if we didn't spend anything by the end of '24, you anticipate you'd have 4.2 million. How comfortable are you, how close can we push that before you get uncomfortable?
Actually, we'll have more than that. The 4.2 is uncommitted money. I, I set aside in addition to that about a million dollars for the debt servicing, so as a reserve.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you already built a cushion in. You already built a cushion in.
Yeah, I did.
And, yeah, because we need the we need a lot of wisdom to decide between these programs. And this is one situation where the money is meant to grow other money. So I'm, I'm inclined really to, unless there's something egregious to, to figure out if we, well, okay, we got five bids, can we handle them all?
Yeah. I, I tend to agree with you on that.
Yeah. So, so of the applications, you're right, we have the request, total request is about 4, oh, 4.4.2 million already sitting there, so.
Well, I was looking through them all this, this morning and they all are their structure put in place to, to grow more stuff. Kalamah water, they need more water to house some of the, the businesses and stuff that they do. And the port out there has been doing a lot of good things. Castle Rock wants to bring that over to the other side of the highway. And I could see what happened down at Space Age and it's, it's not too hard to figure that people aren't going to be interested in the other one either. And then so I, I think to your, to your point, what I see in here, these things are built to bring in other money.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And again, it's 4.25 is what this adds up to. And we have the cushion that we, we don't want to jump into, but we don't have to. Yeah, okay.
The, the only thought that crossed my mind is taking a look at Port Kalama and their Spencer Creek Business Park. I'm wondering if that can be leveraged over two years rather than all at once. There's a lot of infrastructure that's already been built that's sitting there. I don't know if the need is absolutely, they need all 2 million dollars now, if we want to protect a little bit of that cushion.
Yeah, I, I don't, other than the massive earth moving and compacting and all that in the streets, I don't think there's anything else in there. But in, and I was trying to think about that too, that's a hefty tab, but they also are putting in a hefty chunk of their own funds. And I take a look at that too, it's like, it's not just we're getting some for, for free. It's, it's a little bit like what we're doing with the PUD where we're chipping in, but they're chipping in too.
Yeah. They got a history of some success down there.
Well, yeah.
The only, you, when I, to be honest with you, when I looked at them, the only ones that had any concern to me, and it's just because of the intersections down there, was Woodland. Where does that put the stress on? I don't think they have any, in my opinion, they don't have any great exit down there, '22 or '21.
Yeah.
I understand they, you know, you need to build some other stuff so they can grow. I just
So isn't Rose.
We're gonna get beat up for putting more stress on the intersections.
Isn't Rose way towards the northern side of?
Would that be more '22?
Yeah, up near the highway, I think, isn't? Do you, anybody know?
I should know, but I don't. I was just down there earlier today and I I know the long-term solution there is I know the long-term solution there is not what we're doing in Exit Twenty One with our two point six, and it's not. It might, I am thinking this is sort of within the, of the port itself. And that's part of an overall plan that would eventually, if common sense prevailed, would get us another bridge across to Lewis and another exit on I five, it would be Exit Twenty.
That very well could be.
So, so I don't think that would be money thrown away.
Yeah, I, I didn't have any concerns with the project itself, I'm just, I sit down in those, those meetings and I hear about Exit Twenty One and Twenty Two all the time.
Yeah. Uh.
And they're also, as far as a project, they're one that um provided quite a few letters of recommendation um on their project.
The mayor and stuff were behind that.
Mm-hmm. And it's a east-west um tran- if I understand correctly, it's an east-west transportation.
Yeah, it's really only a, where we it's only a four, four percent commitment. I mean, they're doing the rest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we ready to just approve?
Well, well, there is, there's one more element, and I, I don't know that it applies here, it might not at all, I, I've I've thought that there are things where if the entity can monetize it, then we ought to do it as a loan, and if the entity serves people without any restrictions, that is, anybody in the public can, can use that and it's not a special interest group, then, and not being monetizable. Like the money we're doing for Exit Twenty One, it's how do you monetize that? You don't.
Yeah.
And it helps everybody in the county.
The one that may fit that bill is the, uh, the Kalamah, the, the building, the building?
That one is, yeah. That one and uh, the um well, the Kalamah water plant upgrades plus the uh pressure sewer extension probably fits in there also, but I'm not sure it's worth all the paperwork to
Yeah.
to try to finesse that too much.
I, yeah. I think, like you guys, I don't have a lot of issues with any of these, I don't know that I'm, I had to just go ahead and prove it today. I would like to, to have, sit with them next week and just kinda hear what they see as plans for the areas.
Yeah, and I, I think uh I would like to get that so the public is really paying attention, because they really do wanna see that there's some value coming for their money.
Yeah, and we now, we did announce it yesterday that on the third that we would have those presentations, and we'll talk about it again this, this coming week, but
Yeah.
I'll make Paul drive in twice from Castle Rock here.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good idea, and I, I, I would hope that the folks will be willing to present you know, way that they know they're making a sale to the general public.
Are there any particular questions you want me to pass on to the groups before they present?
Let me look real quick through, I.
I know I asked mo- I asked most of them, if they did not get the funding, would they still be able to proceed? And most of these, if they have, if they're part of a match, they said, you know, they have to make the match. And so it would um be detrimental for them to proceed, or it would take longer before they could complete the project.
I'm only laughing because if you ask Paul, can you build it without her help? Absolutely not. Isn't that right?
Well, they're all putting in uh I mean, on Kalamah on the, on the, the water one, it's a one point two million of, of their funds. So they're all contributors. Castle Rock is about, you're about one point two or something like that of your funds, yeah. And on um, Facilities District over at Expo, we got the hotel developer in that, plus the PDA.
So, so then next week at our, at our workshop, it'll be a hearing to, it'll be the hearing to approve the project?
Yes. That's, that's what I was.
A, a, an official hearing or just an individual?
That we have, is the process include a, a, a public hearing to?
Well, that, that's the part I didn't under- I don't understand if you have to come back to the board, because you'll have to have an agreement with each of them. And so I would assume you have to come back to the board.
I would assume that we
Consent agenda.
Approve the, the agreements in a, in a
In advance.
Meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we would give direction to go ahead and prepare the documents for the proposals?
Right.
Yeah.
Then they come back when they're, they're, it's all done and.
In a public, in your public, regular meeting.
And I, I always like to caution that it's not done until it is signed.
Yeah.
Because who knows what we'd learn between now and
Yeah.
sometime and.
Kathy, the only real question I had was just on if the Woodland project has any effect that they worry about for, for Exit Twenty One or Twenty Two.
Okay.
Cause I guess I just hear about it so often, I just like their take on it, but I don't think it's a huge deal, but.
Ask again, I, I didn't.
I, I just wanted to see it, what Woodland's take was, if, if that project had any, in their view, had any detrimental effect to Twenty One or Twenty Two.
And they did, they did note that this, I think it was part of their, um, they said it's part of their transportation, City of Woodland Transportation Map. So it's um, because we, we do ask, where are the plans for this? Is it part of your comprehensive capital plan, facilities plan, things like that? So they said that this particular project's part of their City of Woodland Transportation Plan.
And, and I believe Commissioner Mortensen's right, I think part of that plan is we get this business here and here, and it kinda leads to a, a different overpass or different intersection.
There, there's actually a grade crossing issue that they're trying to, trying to solve, I don't know if this they have a long-term plan and it actually is fairly impressive, it only requires a hundred million, but uh maybe we can borrow it from Castle Rock. But I also know that the new mayor is extremely careful.
Yeah.
And if he signs onto it, it, it's
Yeah.
but that'll tell you a lot.
Yeah, he submitted a letter, he submitted a letter of support.
Good, okay, yeah.
So I think what you're hearing
Is proceed, bring.
We're, we're, we, we pretty much like these things, we'd like to, you know, hear the presentations next week and, and then go from there, but.
Okay.
That feels badly for the three of you, you, I'm, you're just jumping at the bit to talk to us, but.
Well, they can come up and talk to us. You'll have to do it again.
But, but they have to be careful if they've already, the project, if their programs are sold, why keep talking, right?
Who said that once? Once you've made the sale? Once you've made the sales? Yeah.
Who, who'd you have do, put the water main across, because they sure did a good job on that? Did that? Man, they did it quick and, and it looks really good, they cleaned that up nice. Yeah.
What, I haven't been by, or I haven't seen anything going on in, in the, in the lowlands at Tappanhae is
They just finally finished their development agreement with the city, and they went to record it, and they had too much information.
Uh, could you come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
Because we, we, we shortchanged the, anybody who's trying to listen to us, yeah.
So they, they, then we finally finished their development agreement with the city and cap are landing on the cows. And they went to record that, but they had too much information to record, so they had to go back to the engineers and and break that down a little more, and once it's recorded. They, they planned that they will start doing some building there in, in the second quarter of twenty five.
Okay, they, they need plenty of time to let the ground compact when they put in the fill?
You know, I think they, they did a bunch of testing, I don't believe they have to do that, uh, any uh, pre-look on it. They fill the part they're gonna start, uh, the housing, the fifty-four lots on, they have that pretty close agreed right now.
Hmm, and, and all the SEPA stuff has been taken care of?
Yes.
Cause I heard some people being a little concerned over uh runoff from rains.
And most of that was in the uh the Larson Lane area, little uh bunch of houses there. And they uh, they did a good job, they uh went through and did a bunch of ditching when they moved that material last year. It's, I think that's pretty much relieved anyways, concerns in there. They're getting along, they got a pretty good relationship with the people there now, and first it was a little
It was touchy.
Touchy, but it's back, come around, so. That's good. They did a good job trying to take care of the whole residence here.
Cool.
And on your other, that, just like an update on that Powell Road water.
Yeah.
That is, we just uh signed off on the plans, fifty percent completed plans, saw that about a month ago. So that has to go through the Department of Health, get approval to do that project. So we hope to have that by June, and uh we will start. There's any force to start.
With the fifty percent, uh, you, we have a relatively decent handle on estimating the total cost then?
Yeah, I think we're gonna be, we'll probably come in right about where we figured, cause uh to keep the cost down, we're gonna try to do most of that with our own crew and uh keep, that keeps that cost really low.
Yeah, we found here, there was one program that our Public Works Crew did, and they saved us fifty, sixty thousand dollars on a hundred and sixty thousand dollar job.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty good about it. Our crews do a lot, and we lay about two or three water lines in summer, and uh last year they did the, the first phase of that Powell Road. Uh, which was the twelve inch up and a four inch back, went all over the place there.
Yeah.
And uh, so now we have the, they're working on the east, but up through the Powell Road. Yeah.
Any uh, any updates on what's going on along on the east side there where you, I think you all had hoped there would be more development than I've seen?
There's, there's ongoing talk with the, with the family that has property there. And they've been talking for quite a while about building a motel, convenience store, gas station. Uh, so, I mean, every every couple of months, they said that they asked more questions. They, their one has pressure sewer line across, but, you know, I I, you know, I wish I could tell you that they were gonna start building right away, but uh
They, they see the success of this Space Age down there.
But, Space Age, yeah.
Uh, you should have incorporated that into the city long time ago, Paul. Yeah.
You, you know, your Parks Department could probably um, take over the shooting range.
Beware, beware of non-Greeks bearing gifts.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Would you wanna talk to us at all, Norm? If, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we have.
Sit down, because I noticed Paul was on the screen for the audience, so. Um, the one thing I didn't wanna mention, because Kathy had asked when we would know for certain on the uh, the mass of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we probably won't.
Is the mic on?
There you go, it is now.
Okay.
And you can aim, aim it a little bit toward you. Much better, thank you.
Is that good? Okay, uh, we won't likely know um, that we have the match tied up by April third. Uh, and because of that, the uh the Public Facilities District Board did at the last meeting approve adding the seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar project to our capital plan showing five hundred five hundred thousand from the county and two hundred and ninety thousand from uh PFD dollars. We will need to recoup those dollars from the PDA and the um hotel in order to complete our Phase One work that we're planning on doing um on the rest of the site. But we feel we have enough time and we're really willing to take that risk with all our dollars, so um, that's the only thing I wanted to add to our uh to our application was that we, we have finalized, we have a source of funds for that two hundred and ninety doll- ninety thousand dollar match. Unless there's any questions any of you have. Okay, well, thank you, thank you for listening to me.
Your turn, Kim.
Uh, on that particular, yeah, on that particular project, I had also asked um if they had the utilities in place already be- for, for that, for the, basically the roadway assist them to have the hotel, and so they said yes, they believe that they already have the capacity um, utilities are, are available, so.
That's the one where you probably got your work cut out, because you're working with Longview, Kelso, you're working with, with everybody.
Yeah, maybe if you wouldn't mind, Norm, telling us what, if, if you had a Gantt chart, what would be the cru- critical path to an end program there?
Sorry.
Well, this should work better this time. Um, so I haven't put together that chart, but um, you are correct. The City of Longview has adopted, accepted that uh right-of-way as a public right-of-way, so the um permits will need to be obtained from the city, but we've already met with them and, and we're pretty um happy with, with how that's proceeded. We do still need to meet with um Kelso, because we will be tying into their um their street, and we'll need an access um permit from them in order to do that, so um we are looking at um, you know, hoping to start design um the first of June. Um, if we can do that, um, between April third and June first, we would be meeting with the uh, the City of Kelso and and at least getting uh, making sure that they were on board with that uh uh, application, what the requirements would be really is, is what the question is, whether it would need to be a um two curb cuts for handicap accessibility or a single one that's centered uh, on the uh, on the curb return, that, those types of things, because it's pretty much only impacting the um the, the extreme curb of their roadway, and we would be tying it in with a a direct connection at Fifth Avenue, so there would not be like a uh a jog in the uh, in the right-of-ways, so that, that's already been taken care of. And they saw the design several years ago when it was initially developed and uh, and dedicated to the, to the city. Um, so the, really the critical path is, is getting them up to speed again, um, or getting, reacquainting them with that project. And then starting design in uh June.
Do we have a contract with the hotel here?
Um, well, there is a contract with the hotel here, they have not closed on the property.
And
And when they say we it's, it's the Public Development Authority, I'm sorry, what?
And And what is the tie up? I mean, we've we've been talking hotels since oh, I think Dennis was in high school still.
Yeah, I think at least Dennis was teaching in high school. Um, but you know, they they have been talking to the hotel for quite a while. Um.
Well, I'm just hoping one day I I'm told that green light, we're going.
That that is what we're all shooting for, yes.
So we still.
But I'm not, I'm not, we're not at that point yet.
Okay.
And I'm not the person to tell you that in any event. It's it's really going to be coming from the Public Development Authority um that information. So they're the ones that are dealing directly with the hotel here, so.
Yeah.
The only thing I remember them talking about when when they were in here and they they spoke to us a little bit is the change in interest rates, they were still working on their financing package.
That made me nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's if it's that close of a question for you. Because usually the business I would expect if one or two percent is going to make a difference to you, you're probably a grocer because their margins are so slim. And the margins in hotels shouldn't be that slim. So.
So um Nor- Norm, as I look at the the drawing, the artist's drawing from Gibson Olsen, it appears that the entrance way will actually be narrower than Fifth Avenue and the interior roadways at at the uh at the event center is uh is that just a preliminary thing? They'll true it up a little bit later on. I I would imagine it needs to be a little bit wider as a main entrance.
That was a suggestion by the City of Longview uh without really benefit of the uh um engineer and architect being involved to determine exactly how they want that entrance to look. So um it's still to be designed, but I think the one thing that um that we liked about that suggestion was the singular sidewalk and and more landscaped area um along the right of way to make it a nicer looking uh entry with more plantings.
Commissioners, you may not realize it, but the city limits are not in the middle of Washington Street. They're on the property edge to the south, so the the little thin line. So that entryway is two jurisdictions.
Yes, it is. It is. And that's and that's and that's the access permit we need from from the City of Kelso.
So the part that's in Longview will be complete streets and the one in Kelso will be incomplete streets. Uh, you you know, complete streets is the bicycle thing.
Yes.
I I've always enjoyed the.
Yeah, it's 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 just a small approach is what it is. It's be in Kelso. But together, I mean, the the two pieces will be a complete intersection, a four-way intersection at uh Washington Street and Fifth Avenue.
I was just musing because I used to ride the bike a lot and I would go on bike lane and every now and then you'd see a sign saying Bike Lane Ends. And I wonder what they expected the cyclists to do when they got there. It's like if you were driving down the street and then there was barricades that street ends. I mean, you wouldn't be a very happy camper.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. So next Wednesday
Next Wednesday.
We'll go through and we'll we'll make an announcement and try and get audiences if they have interest in that. They should be. They should have some interest in this stuff, but.
So I I've tried to also anticipate how much time each of them of them would have. And you know, I'm I'm hoping about fifteen minutes and.
If we allow for questions, fifteen seems like I don't know, it seems like it might go longer, but then it's a lot of time.
Well, it'll be interesting to see if uh our friend from Fall Creek will show up with inquiries about the P F D.
Hmm.
Oh.
Your friend.
My my friend, yeah. Last time I saw him, he was cussing me out as he left the room.
Yeah, well, that's about right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you getting used to that now?
Huh?
Are you getting used to being cussed out now?
Jeez. Yeah, I should, yeah.
Yeah, you can't slow walk alone if they do stuff like that. Think we're done.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Okay, we'll be we'll be back. We'll be back next Wednesday and you'll have presentations. And I'll ask them to go in this order, the same order of our summary sheet.
All right. Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you.